It's noon, so we will go ahead and call the meeting to order and do the roll call.
Mrs. Heights?
Yes, here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Lima?
Here.
Mr. Levinson?
Here.
Dr. Schultes?
Here.
All right, can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mrs. Heights?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Lima?
Yes.
Mr. Levinson?
Yes.
Dr. Schultes?
Yes. Okay, I move to table the decision before us today, the approval of the contract.
I second that.
And I'm sorry, I didn't hear you're moving to-
Table it.
Table it, okay.
And I second it.
Okay.
Right, discussion?
Yeah, I'll start if I may. I have a whole laundry list of questions and I'm not sure the best one to start, but I'll start with one. You know, I'm a, I have been involved in baseball pretty much my whole life. I umpire high school baseball now and one of my favorite baseball players, Yogi Berra, has many, many quotes. And one is deja vu all over again. And I feel that pertains, from my perspective on where we are here today, I don't see a lot of dissimilarity from what we went through back in mid-December. I guess, among many other questions, I look at where, you know, at our retreat, which was two weeks ago, we had decided unanimously to wait until we had a comprehensive report from our administration about our current status, all things legal in our district. We all agreed to that. And then to find out last, this past Tuesday morning, our superintendent, after being out for a week with COVID, at least this is my understanding what happened, arrives at her office and is directed by our president of the board to sign a contract with Hoskin-Farina-Camp. And for whatever reason, she went ahead and signed it that was supposed to represent our board, which it didn't. And I only found out about this by chance, that there was a contract to be signed. I found out mid-morning perhaps on Tuesday that this was occurring. And so, and then that evening at the board meeting, one of the first discussions I had with Dr. Circo was that, at least it came across to me, she wasn't really totally familiar with the contract and made some assumptions about who knew and kind of, I think, believe she stated during our meeting that she shouldn't have signed it. But nonetheless, it was signed, only to find out later that that contract, again, this is my understanding, was essentially voided because our whole board was not aware of that process, if you want to call it, that led us to that point. So with that in mind, you know, and then, you know, following that meeting, our board meeting just this past Tuesday, at least I think we all agreed again to put things on hold, all things legal, and to had our report from our administration, which we said, we asked to have it by mid-February and that we were directed to present questions to our superintendent by next Tuesday about things we would like to have answered. And to find out just the other night that we're having this meeting to vote on the contract with Hoskin-Farina-Camp. And so, in everything I just talked about, are just a lot of questions. I guess going back to the first one, this past Tuesday, I guess I'm totally unaware of the timetable that led to that point, that this document was in front of our superintendent and none of us, I shouldn't say none of us, a number of us on the board were unaware of, and how that came to be.
Sure, and if you'd like, I can go ahead and expound on some things. I think this is getting completely conflated. It's, so here's what happened. We all decided at the board retreat and even prior to that that we were all up for doing some board training with Hoskin-Farina-Camp, that everybody agreed on that. So when I was helping coordinate that, I asked David Price, I said, what do we need to do to make sure that we're operating within them being able to do board training with us? And he said, I just need to talk to Diana to coordinate some things as far as, I thought it was a fee schedule, so I think I misspoke to what that was. That was as far as the information that I had. I asked Diana to reach out to David to get that coordinated so that we could do the training. And that's why I did not direct her to sign it. I just asked her if it had been signed. So there was no unilateral decision there. And that was so that we could all do the training that we wanted, that we all agreed to do. And so the first time I saw the contract was Wednesday morning as well, as far as the language and anything that was said about it. So this was really a housekeeping item and I just helped, I just made sure that Diana and David were talking. That was it.
And going back to your point, so thanks for that. But, you know, and I had talked to Mr. Price on the Friday before the holiday break about the two two-in-one meetings that he was conducting regarding essentially the do's and don'ts for boards regarding open meetings and those kinds of things. And he assured me that, you know, I was, had questions about that. Why, A, was that meeting, were those meetings not just in public? They seemed pretty benign, that good information for everyone to have. And he shared that, you know, through his experience of doing these presentations over two decades, that they lend themselves better to do them in private. And, you know, I didn't know, we didn't totally click because I knew these had been done evidently. He'd shared with me at Casby meetings, so those are certainly open meetings. But nonetheless, I thought, okay, you know, I'll go for that. But I asked him, and he showed me, like, from my experience, because I've been on the board, that a lot of that information would be old news and I thought, you know, I agreed. But I specifically asked him about any other business that might come up, I didn't say it would, but that might come up in those meetings, you know, what would happen. And he assured me that anything that would direct towards any business that would require us, you know, the whole board, make sure that happened. So I left that kind of confident that that would happen. I have to, and again, I don't know this for a fact and I'll be clear about that, but, you know, that was Friday and then yet that Tuesday, following Tuesday after the holiday break, this, you know, whatever Diana was signing, this contract, which must have been for services, you know, we were looking, I guess, to contract with, came about. So I wasn't sure why that wasn't shared with me, that that was in the works or, because again, being a board member, this is board business. So it gets back to my broader question about, there seems to be, before we go into any contract, what we had agreed to twice in our meetings is that we should have, maybe it's a meeting totally dedicated to understanding where we are legally and all these kinds of things that we said we would wait till mid-February to do. So it's, you're right, I think there's been either intentionally or unintentionally misleading information, not good communication about what's been going on. And again, for me personally, and it's motherboard, as I find out Tuesday morning that this was even going down, was a bit disconcerting. So that's, it really, Andrea, it gets down to, I'm not sure, and maybe you can expand on this or someone can, what is, there seems, appears to be some kind of rush or urgency with getting this done that I'm unaware that, why that is. Because we currently have legal counsel. If something urgent came up, I'm sure we could contract out with who we needed to at that time. But I'm not sure the urgency behind all this that would preclude us from waiting till February 18th, February meeting 15th, I believe it is, to address all these things. So anyway, that's kind of the start of some of my questions is, you know, how did we get to where we are today, having before us a contract that, again, collectively, we haven't sat down and talked about this at all?
Well, and can I- These are two separate issues. This was, this was an issue of being able to work with Mr. Price and be able to ask questions when we were at those meetings, which broadened their scope to be able to do that with the board. And then the internal evaluation of in-house counsel is a completely separate issue.
Absolutely.
So I'm not, and we already work with David Price. All that this did was expand the scope so that as board members, we could ask them questions. I don't see, like, again, this was, this was a coordination of me just, you know, getting this training situated that everybody agreed to and being able to, you know, if questions came up during that training, that he would have the ability to answer those questions. And then there's a separate issue with that that we'll come back to here in a minute because we had another board member that wanted to preclude us from asking any questions. So I see these as two separate things. We're still going to do the internal evaluation of in-house counsel. And then we already work with Mr. Price. This just broadened the scope that we as board could ask him additional questions.
So let me, really quickly, can I jump in there? So I'm not sure that that makes sense to me. Why did we sign a contract after the trainings to allow us to have the trainings?
The contract was given to Dr. Circo before the training. I don't know why it took so long to get signed.
So then why is it so urgent today after all of this has happened? Why are we in a special meeting today?
Because you were concerned, Carrie, and you wanted to talk about it over email. And I wasn't going to talk about it over email with you. I wanted to do it in the public since you're so bent on doing everything in public. So I called a special meeting so the public can hear what's going on. And this is what it is. And for the accusations that things are nefarious or that things are happening behind the scenes without picking up the phone and just asking, I'm kind of done with it.
Okay, so can you explain now, why is there urgency today to sign the contract?
This contract's signed. Now the board can talk about it and we can ratify it. So now Dr. Circo has the purview as superintendent to sign the contract with any legal counsel. It's a professional contract. We as the board don't sign that contract. Now that, since this does involve the board, which I, again, didn't have the language prior to Tuesday's meeting, so I couldn't speak to any of that Tuesday night, we can ratify it today, which is why we called a special meeting.
But why do we need to?
Because we would like to be able to ask Mr. Price questions.
So does that mean that there are, so, so again, that goes back then to the exact same situation that Doug is trying to detail. That means that we've defined a need that our current service, that our current in-house legal service cannot provide us with, so we need additional service?
I don't know if it's additional service or it could just be a matter of checks and balances of if there's other questions that we have a secondary opinion.
So if this is all hypothetical, I still don't understand the urgency of this.
I'll throw in just a little bit, Andrea. So Mr. Price did the training. I was very pleased with that training. I have never been offered any training by our in-house counsel. I don't know why, I don't understand all of that. I know that we did this training and I want to continue to be able to ask questions, particularly some of the things that we learned there. And as we expand, we are a very new board and I just cannot figure for the life of me what the big deal is about having another legal counsel outside of in-house counsel to be able to take our questions that we have as we are going through the process learning about being board members. It's a pretty broad subject. I mean, I think, I think we've all, we've all found things that we've gone ahead with that we might have done differently if we'd had a little better advice. I would like to have that advice before I need it, not afterwards. I feel personally, after doing the training, this goes beyond whatever was set up, as I understand it, in order to protect everyone, it needs to be an agreement with a law firm to be able to even have conversation with them. I mean, when you go in to see a lawyer for anything, usually, you know, it's a very benign kind of conversation as an introduction to decide if you think the relationship is going to work and you want to pay for services and then you move forward with that. But after, after a very initial introduction, there's always a document to protect both sides when you're talking to a lawyer. So, you know, when we went into it, it was really simple to me that we, we had to protect both sides and say, yeah, we're just expanding. It's not, I don't understand that this is a whole new contract. It's just simply an expansion of services to cover both sides so that it's legal that we're moving with conversation with each other. It's that simple. Now that I've had the training, I would like to continue to be able to ask Mr. Price and possibly Mrs. Errett, questions that I may have regarding how maybe we're doing things here or just to get that second, that second advice. And as I mentioned the other night, what I've learned is that both Mr. Price and Mrs. Errett have extraordinary experience, extraordinary experience in school board, school district law. So that gives me a great deal of confidence, again, for those double checks, to make sure that we're doing everything right. I mean, as a new board, you know, I'm just beginning to realize the mistakes that could be made if we're not very diligent about making sure that Ts are crossed and Is are dotted. And so, you know, that, I'll again reiterate that that was what had me in discussion with Brad Miller to begin with. When we tabled that, we're not going forward with that. When we learned that Mr. Price and Mrs. Errett were already engaged with the district and clearly, they must be happy with their services. They've been doing many aspects of our legal work for decades, as I understand it. Did a little checking up on them around the state with other districts that use them. They're pleased. I didn't have any reason to think it was a big deal, other than I love the idea. And I'm going to always want that checks and balances. To rely on one person, that seems very risky to me. So I like the idea of being able to, I believe I can go into John's office anytime I have a question for him. But if I have a question that pertains to something that I think either Mrs. Errett or Mr. Price are very well-versed in, I think, I think it just really frees up our board and allows us an expansion of our options to get advice. Maybe we ask them both on some things. I don't foresee that this is, you know, an everyday thing or it may not even happen very often. But I feel that it's very important to have some, some way of going outside the circle of just inside the district, district employees to be able to ask some of those questions.
Well, and I just want to remind you, because I know that, like you said, it's frustrating at times to feel like you have not had the training. We all went to Casby right after the election.
Diana, in all honesty, that was absolutely worthless for training.
Yeah, and normally they do a much better job than-
And we've talked about that.
Right, and that's why, and we also have the new training that's set up for the 17th.
Yep.
And it took us a while to get those confirmed dates.
Exactly.
And so we've got that set up and that is Casby and Case together are doing presentation.
And maybe at that point, you know, we'll feel comfortable enough to feel like we can, we can move a little more easily. But for right now, I mean, we're two months in. We're two months into this. That's a, that's a long time.
I mean, in fairness, on November 30th, the day that you guys were sworn into office, John Williams sent an email offering training and a memo on open meetings and that was declined. So to continually say that there was no training offered the day that you guys came in, it was offered.
I don't know where that email went to. Because at that point, we didn't have our, I'll have to go back and double check. I don't know that it was necessarily declined. I don't know if it was, I mean-
Okay, yeah, definitely.
I don't know, I don't know where it went or-
You did respond to that email, so, yeah, maybe I can-
I may have.
Let me circle back and just, Angela, I don't disagree with anything you just said. And no one's claimed anybody's been nefarious or anything like that. What we're asking for, what I'm asking for, is that what you, what you're saying, Angela, is this is, this is the need and this is what we want. That's all well and good. But we all agreed before any decision was made collectively by all of us, right? That that's a need and let's pursue the avenues that will help remedy that, that we wanted to get a full scope picture where we are. And we said by mid-February. And so even, let's say this is mid-February and we all sit down and we all get the report and we all say, yep, it'd be great to have a second pair of eyes on our stuff. Great. Then what's the process we're going to do to select that? Do we just unilaterally or just, do we just say, let's go with Hoskin-Farina-Camp? Or do we do the RFP to put it up for bid with, you know, with different firms? I mean, there's that process that was negated to do this. And again, when you go back to the meetings with David Price and he assured, he said, first off, those meetings were exactly what he did at Casby meetings, which didn't require anybody to sign any document about asking questions. You can ask questions in those meetings about what he's talking about. He did those for free.
Right, right, Doug, but that, now it's under the Casby umbrella. This isn't under Casby umbrella.
No, but the point is, what David said, if any questions ventured outside, that he would direct that were board-related, right? This is about the board. This is about individuals on the board, but about the board, that they would be taken to, with all of us present. So getting back to where you are, no one disagrees with that. That may be something we define as a need. But we also agreed to let's wait till we have an analysis and we can all decide together or vote, whatever it is, to decide, should we move ahead with that? Right now, we haven't had that.
So my understanding of the analysis, Doug, was to look at all of the things that our in-house counsel currently handles and to evaluate all of that.
All of our-
Right, all of it, across the board. This is not that. This is not that. This is just a simple agreement so that board members can feel comfortable going to an additional attorney that this, that we're already engaged with. This isn't a new contract with an RFP and all of that because we're looking for new services with a new vendor. This is, this is a firm that is, we're asking for a tiny little expansion. We're not asking for him to take over anything that our in-house counsel is, we're not moving to do any of that. All we're asking is a simple request that we'll be able to go to David Price or Tammy Errett if we have additional questions. I can't imagine that we're not a recovered to do that anyway. I can't believe that the district would have a law firm that its board members aren't already covered to go in and ask any questions that they have. It's my understanding that that is absolutely normal procedure. So to have this expansion, I didn't even, I didn't even know why the heck it was necessary.
This is just, again, this is getting way more complicated than it really is. We all agreed to do the training. I asked what was needed to do the training. It was a matter of Dr. Circo and Mr. Price having a discussion. I wasn't privy to those discussions. I just asked the two of them to talk. They got, they, they obviously discussed what that scope of practice needed to look like. Diana had it before she was out sick, so I don't know why it didn't get signed. All I did was follow up because after we did the training, it wasn't, it still said it wasn't signed. So I just asked, hey, is it signed? That is all of the extent of this. And it was a matter so that, again, it's a formality for their firm to be able to do that so we can ask questions. And I guess what I would pose is, what is your concern about us asking them questions? I mean, you're asking us why we would like to move forward with this, which again, I think is very simple and a totally separate issue than this evaluation of our other legal services. And I think being able to ask them questions helps us in that process as well.
I think that part of the confusion is that, I agree with you exactly, Angela. I can't imagine that you would be prohibited from going and talking to them under the previous contract. So I'm not sure that, that having this language, this expansion of scope actually accomplishes that. What the expansion of scope says is that it's the firm's understanding that the board has requested that they provide us with legal advice and act as our representative. And so-
I think that's pretty common language, though. I don't, I don't think that's, I don't think that's outside the lines at all. Again, I didn't need them to sign that, but they're the lawyers. In fact, they're very high esteemed lawyers. And if they say, hey, listen, to cover everybody the way it should be done, we need this very simple adjustment to the language, it isn't, it isn't, you know, well, you're going to have to pay this huge fee in order to do this and it's going to contain all of these things. It was very, very simple. I mean, I honestly am still stunned today that we're sitting in here with all of these people in this room and had to call a special session to take care of this because I just never would have dreamed in a million years that that was going to be the issue that it's obviously become.
Yeah, I think that, I feel the same, the exact same way. I think for me, part of the confusion is, what is the scope? If the scope was simply to ask simple questions, again, it's confusing because we have in-house counsel. We already have an engagement with Hoskin-Farina-Camp. So what is the point of them? What does it mean for them to be our legal representative? And so for me, that presents all sorts of complications. Does that mean, so our previous contract had everything going through John Williams? This now makes it separate. How are they going to interact with each other? How are we going to keep costs down? How are we going to ensure that you don't have lawyers doing two different things?
And we've got two lawyers here in the, in the room. It is my understanding that it is the purview of the board to be able to talk to anybody in the district or anybody that we employ, anybody that we have a contract with. And that doesn't mean the board altogether. That means you can go and visit with anybody within that, within the district to ask questions and do anything you want. This seems to me to just be an issue so that, lawyers do a lot of this. You know, they do a lot of, well, we got to add this, we got to do that, we got to make sure, because they're, they're just so careful about making sure that everything is covered. And we have to move the same way. So again, I thought it was a really simple piece to just say, hey, let's just do this, let's just add this line so that we make sure that everything is covered and everything is, you know, to the letter of the law. Again, I just, I can't figure out what the, what the big issue could possibly be around something that simple.
Well, I think the issue is we didn't ever talk about it and it was done without our knowledge when we had already agreed to the separate process.
But the separate process for me, Carrie, in my understanding, was truly, again, I thought I could go talk to them anyway and I think I-
I'm not sure that you can't, yeah.
So about what? I don't know if there are boundaries or whatever, that this kind of releases those boundaries so that we're free to discuss anything? Again, I don't understand that that makes it any different, but if they say it does, then it does.
Mr. Price is here if we want to-
Yeah, it's the, these are two separate issues, as was my understanding. Again, we agreed to ask a lot of questions because we had questions as a, you know, all but one member, new, brand-new board, about, well, what does in-house counsel actually handle? Like I said, when we came on, we had no idea that we had Mr. Price or Mrs. Errett. or Mrs. Errett employed at all to do anything within the district when I asked, what, what does our in-house counsel handle all of the legal services in our district? Yes, you know, Mr. Williams is our in-house counsel. Okay, well, that didn't sit very well with me, so I began to look around, talk around, ask some questions. So as we talked about it in our retreat, we wanted clarification about what in-house, what's in in-house counsel's box? And what is in the box that we contract out for, for whatever reason? And then the board can look at that and have some opinion about where is the district best served? Doing those line items with in-house counsel or moving them on to an outside firm that, that we employ, that we've employed for like, I don't know, 30 or more years? So again, we still want to do that process. We still want to understand it more deeply. I, I think that you and I both agree a lot that this is a, it's something that interests us. It's something that we kind of, we have a strong interest in diving deeper into how those things work. And again, understanding how maybe we can help our district be best served with those things. And, and, you know, we, we spend a lot on legal throughout the years. And I think if, if we can have some input that helps to, you know, I love saving money. That's, I love that piece. But also to do it right the first time in the best way that we can so that we don't have additional legal, you know, fees and, and processes and problems that we've had in the past, I think that, I just think that makes sense. So I'm looking forward to that process. But in, in the meantime, just shoring things up to make everything, you know, kosher to be able to move, move forward easily, again, I just didn't see what the big issue on that would be.
So for the, for the sake of time today, because really today with this special meeting, it's just to, for the ratification, the approval of the ratification. Carrie, I understand your concerns. I think those are something that we could discuss and get clarity around what those are, even at our next meeting. I just, I think that's getting kind of way into the weeds right, right today. This, the specific issue on the table right now, well, it's to table this right now or, or we move forward with it, so.
Well, yeah, and I think you just said that we can talk about it at the next meeting, so that seems to be consensus. But yeah, I'm not sure what about my questions about, like, what is the urgency? What is the need, you know, and I haven't, so I understand that you guys want to double-check things. What does that mean? How are we going to save, how are we going to ensure that we're not blowing up the district's budget by us asking questions? Are we, are we going to have two lawyers doing the same thing? What exactly is the defined scope of each lawyer?
I don't think there's any way to answer that, Carrie. I would love to be able to do that.
I want to make sure that we're being protective of the district's resources.
Well, I think we just all have, I think, I mean, I'll raise my hand. I'll be very cautious of that. I'm not going to be living at the lawyer's office, drinking coffee and, and taking up time that the, that the district's going to pay for or simple things that maybe I think I need to talk with John about first. I want the option to be able to talk with them about anything that I think is important enough. I think as an elected board member, I think it's certainly a, a big piece of our job to be cognizant of not blowing up the attorney's fees unnecessarily. So I think, again, just as, I think we're already board members, so I think, I think that goes really without having to speak it.
Okay, we have Mr. Jones and then Mr. Levinson with questions. Go ahead.
I, I think that, you know, everything got kind of messed up when we, we sat down. Have you seen the contract earlier? Yes. But we all sat down in the same retreat meeting. We all said we wanted to do a board training. And then it came to us that Mr. Price is going to do it. And even Mr. Williams himself told us to talk to, talk to Tammy. Tammy's a great person. She's already involved with us. So this form is already, this, this firm has already been with us. It wasn't the same situation as everybody thought it was with Miller's. We're out there looking. These people are already here working with us, so why not be able to ask them any questions that we'd be able to ask? When we go to the board training, we get there and, and, you know, he put a great, you know, great little training on. I thought it was great. And then the next thing I hear is, I can't, you can't ask any questions. I've been told, instructed not to ask anything else. I'm like, you know, those, those things, this is why we're here today because it gets, it gets so frustrating because we're not against each other. I mean, we're supposed to be here to protect our kids' education and make a better education for our kids. Help our teachers, help our kids out, and we're not doing that. We're spending too much time fighting with each other and bickering with each other. We're going behind each other's backs and making phone calls to CASB and this person and that person, and private emails and rallying the troops up. That's not helping the kids. It's not helping education. We're not here to be conspiring against anybody. Do I like Mr. Williams? Yes. Do I know the man? No. Do I like Mr. Price? Yes. Do I know him? No. We're supposed to be doing what's right for our school district. And what's right for our school district is making sure everything goes as planned and taken care of. I don't think we're going to be physically responsible, I mean, irresponsible with people's money. It's my money too. It's your money too. We're not going to be irresponsible with that. But I think in order to do the things that we need to do to protect our kids, if we have to have a contract with Mr. Price that says, to ask me a question, you have to have this, that we already have with him, then so be it. It was just going through saying, hey, in order for you to ask me a question, I just need this, this little simple thing that's already in the office. It wasn't like we even said, hey, make up a private conversation and do this right now. He's already with our office. He's already contracted with the district. We just had to ask him to expand it.
So let me, let me just be clear. So A, I was pushing for these to be open meetings. I specifically asked Mr. Price, and he agreed, that if anything that would have been, anything that would have been precluded from an open meeting that would have had to go to executive session be treated as the same way in the, in the private meetings. That's all, that was my request. He agreed and that was honored.
What comes after that is all the emails of people being secretive behind your back and we're doing this and this and blah, 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 and you got to so on and so forth. And it's just, it's dumb because we're not being secretive. We're just doing what's right. The same as if it were you, you, you and you, and the new person came in. You think just because we all got voted on conservative ballot that we're all with each other? I can agree, I'm a grown man. I can make my own decisions. If I don't agree with them, I'll say I don't agree with them.
You're, you're putting words in my mouth.
No, 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 I'm not, no, I'm not putting words in, I'm not, I'm just saying this, everything, every time something comes up, it's always you guys are being secretive. There's no transparency. Well, I mean.
Yeah, I didn't know about the contract until after it was signed.
Neither did we. I didn't know about it. It's a simple thing, but contract got messed up.
That's fine. That's fine. We can talk about it.
But that's what we're saying now. In order to know, to work with Dr., I'm sorry, with Mr. Price, we have to have this to say, okay, fine, if you want to ask a question, fine. Nobody said John Williams is out.
Let me be clear. So Mr. Price, was it the case that you said, nobody can ask questions until I have this signed contract?
Well, I think the man's on trial, so.
Well, I just, this is what we keep, we, it's said, we've said this multiple times now that we had to have this contract in place in order to have these meetings, and that was never my understanding. My understanding was the meetings were a free service and that we didn't have to sign anything.
They absolutely were, but I asked the question myself. I don't know if anybody else did. You know, I'm going to have further questions. You know, can, can we do that?
And so, and so your understanding was, without the specific contrast, we could not ask questions?
No, I don't know about that, Carrie. I'm, I don't know. At this point, I swear, I don't know. I mean, I just can't, again, I can't figure why a simple one-line added is, is a big deal.
Mr. Levinson, hold on, before Mr. Price answers, Mr. Levinson did have his hand up. Go ahead.
Well, no, he can, he can answer that and then I'll.
Okay, all right, thank you.
If I'm the witness here, I don't know if, I think I forgot the question.
Carrie, can we ask it?
Yeah, I was simply asking if, 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 again, the justification for the new contract over and over has been that we had to have the contract in place to have the trainings, which didn't happen, it happened after the fact. And in order to ask you any questions, we had to have a contract in place. And I'm asking if that's.
No, that, that was not my understanding.
That was not my understanding.
I spoke with you and, and several other board members before the training. There was a strong concern expressed that, that these meetings would be used to discuss legal issues that would be, that should be better presented in an executive session with the entire board. And so I agreed that I would police that. And if you will recall, you didn't like that because I said, you're going to have to trust me that I'm going to abide by that. And that's why when these folks asked me the questions that went beyond the scope of the training, or at least I thought it was, is what I said. I don't think I should answer that question right now. That should be done in another setting. So that's what happened with that.
Right. Which we didn't know that until the day we showed up. So again, the contract was in Dr. Circo's hands prior to us going into that training.
I honestly don't remember that, and I do have an email from you asking me to sign the contract.
Yeah, that was because after we did the training, Mr. Price said that they still didn't have anything. I came in and asked you, Diana, I, we had a physical conversation when we talked about a few other things, and I said, we're going to be doing this training with Mr. Price. He asked for you to call him to make sure we have everything set, and you said you would. And then that's where it was left, until I found out that it was still kind of hanging out there and then I just followed up with you. That's, I had no knowledge of what that contract looked like prior to. So I mean, that is the sequence of events, so. Is there any further discussion, Mr. Levinson?
Thank you. I, I guess, and forgive me, I'm not as clear or articulate as I wish I, as I wish I could be. I, I'll try one more time. I, I don't disagree with what Angela had to say, and it's nice if you're in that setting to be able to ask questions. And if the concern from Mr. Price was that, that, that went beyond the scope of those two, two-in-one meetings, that's great. Then I get, where I'm coming from in terms of tabling this is, the thing we had agreed to, really clear about this, is that we wouldn't go anywhere with any firm or any extension until we all, not, not piecemeal, but we all sat down, talked about the information, talked about what are the needs, and that's where Angela could bring up. You know, I'd like to be able to ask questions and get a third party or another view on things. Then, then we could have that discussion as a board. That, that's the issue here before us, as I see it. We haven't gone through a process to, to be, to vote on this today. We, we, this happened on Tuesday. A document was signed after the fact that some of us didn't even know was, was happening. And that's the big issue. Because if this, this isn't how we should be doing business if it's right now relating to legal services, if it goes towards anything, you know, we had made an agreement.
So, Dr. Circo, are we aware of every contract or every adjustment to a contract that you signed? Do you put that before the board before you do any of that?
It depends. In other words.
No, do, do you, do you put before the board every time you make an adjustment or sign any kind of new contract?
I would say not generally all contracts, some contracts depending upon the contract.
Sure, sure.
And the contract, the reason legal services ends up falling in a different category because there are often many financial things that go with that. So for instance, when we have, when we had just, you know, in-house counsel, it costs us about $80,000 a year.
I'm not even going to get into what it costs because we're going to have a big conversation about what it costs. That's all part of this. What Mr. Williams does as in-house counsel and what we, we contract out for, that's a, that's that whole other thing that Doug is talking about.
It really plays into though, you know, whether or not it comes in front of the board.
Okay.
But I also would say that, you know, if, if we're just talking about this, this explicit contract, I know, and I would like to ask Dr. Hill, he, he has a lot of questions about how we will, to say, again, we're, we are trustees of the public money. And to say like, oh, trust me, we're not going to spend too much of it, isn't good enough. We need to understand what the scope is. We need to make sure that we have a way to control those costs and we're not spending excessively.
I don't believe that we should control costs when it comes to a board member having questions about something legal with our own legal team.
Well, we want to make sure that we're not, that we're being efficient, not duplicating efforts. But I know that Dr. Hill has a lot of logistical questions about how to make sure that we're not duplicating legal services, that we don't have any conflicts. And so I, you know, I would like to turn that over to Dr. Hill to ask some of those questions.
Well, and y'all are already discussing some of it, so, yeah, the differentiation between when we engage in-house versus external counsel. So right now, kind of a summed-up version of it is, really John handles all the in-house stuff and then we send out things to Hoskins, Farina, and Kemp. Usually it's around special education, things like that. So I guess the question is, and maybe it can't be answered today, but if we're going to begin engaging outside counsel more, like, does there need to be a discussion about when that happens? And, or is it just kind of anytime somebody wants to?
Absolutely not. As a board member, anytime I want to go talk to one of our lawyers, I can do that. Is, is my understanding.
So the other question then that I think would be good to clarify is, so is this, because usually what's happened in the past is, if the board was engaging with legal counsel, whether it was internal, external, that was communicated amongst the board members. So is it going to be a situation where you have individual board members going to get legal advice but then not relaying what they learned to the rest of the board? Again, that's up for discussion, I guess, amongst yourselves. And then you've already mentioned the cost, like somehow having like a, a way to have a checks and balances around, like the amount of legal services that we're asking for outside. Like, how are we keeping track of that? Because right now, we do keep track of it internally, but if it's, becomes, you know, I call on one day and then someone calls the next day and someone, like, those are going to start racking up. So, so if the, if the answer to the first question is, board members can go whenever they want, I guess the second question, and y'all can discuss this amongst yourselves, is, how are you going to relay what you learned in those meetings back to the rest of the board so that you don't have five different board members going with the same exact question over and over again and we're getting charged every single time for that, so.
And, and you know, I guess I would say my understanding, maybe I'm wrong on this, is that when someone goes for legal services, it's on behalf of the board. It's not individually. So if, if I all of a sudden wanted to go visit with, with an attorney, I can't do that unilaterally. It has to be something as a board, we've decided, yeah, that, that's something we should be doing.
No, we can visit with them. We can go fact-finding. We can't make any decisions. We can't move or, or instruct legal counsel to do something on behalf of the board. But we can absolutely go in, just like we can individually go in and meet with Mr. Williams. This isn't about, the only thing we can't do on our own is make decisions. We can fact-find and go out and get information that we feel that we need and then we bring it back to the board in order for any decision to be made.
Okay. Is that, is that accurate? We have two attorneys there. Is that how that should work?
Mr. Williams, Mr. Price? Mr. Williams is nodding his head yes. All right, any further discussion? Okay, we need to call the vote to table it.
Okay, so the vote to table it, Mrs. Heights?
No.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Ms. Lima?
No.
Mr. Levinson?
Yes.
Dr. Schultes?
Okay, I move to call the vote to approve the expansion and the new agreement that was signed with Mr. Price's firm.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say again, like, it's, it's just we're outside of the process. I don't, I, I just want there, I want to be able to make sure that we're efficiently using the resources of the district. And that's why we all talked about this. I, I'm, I just feel like this was, you know, Angela, I think we, we both definitely understand just on such different, you know, I think we both agree that I'm just surprised how big of a deal this is. And I think, I think for me, it's just really confusing that, that justification was, well, we had to have it previously and we can't ask him any questions even though he's our lawyer. And so we have to have a new agreement. When we decided any new agreements would be covered after an analysis. I understand that you're.
Again, it was an expansion. It wasn't like, I understood that to be, if we were going to do that, it was a new agreement with a new firm, with new lawyers, with a truly expanded service, not a tiny expansion, one-line expansion of services that, that this firm is already rendering to the district.
And after this, we can.
We can always do, yeah.
Well, after this, we can. Well, after this, we can get organized to make it clear, but again, like I said, today's, today's meeting was to do this, and then we will make sure that we are organized with how we're going to approach Mr. Williams and Mr. Price.
So, but what I don't understand is why we don't do that before. If we keep saying, like, no, trust, trust us, it'll be fine, we'll make sure that we, you know, don't spend too much money, that we'll put a system in place, why don't we do that all at once? Why isn't that done together?
I, I just personally want this wrapped up, so that this is done, I just don't see it as that big of a deal as far as a, a, a negative issue could come of it, so.
Well, this was supposed to be done before our training, so
Exactly.
It was a housekeeping item, as far as I understood it, so.
I, I guess, for, for a, a comment or a discussion, I'll just reiterate, I, I guess I'm frankly heartened that we, I, I believed in, in good faith, we had an agreement on how we were gonna proceed, I thought it was very, very clear, and obviously, that, that hasn't taken place, and I'm not confident that agreements we'll make in the future will hold any weight. I, I, I'm not confident that going forward, I have any reason to believe decisions, discussions are not, are, are, are not being done without the whole board being aware of them. I, I think Angela said right, we're, we're two, two months in just about, and, and this seems to plague us, this, this, a process. I was very heartened two weeks ago that we came to agreement on this, we'd all seen thumbs up on it, and only to see it go by the wayside because
I just don't feel that this puts our agreement by the wayside at all. We, we've just agreed that we're gonna continue to look at our in-house services versus what is done out, outside of the, our in-house services. We, we have not thrown that to the wayside, not for one minute. I don't think anybody has said that.
Well, it, it's not what's said, you know, it's, it's what actions have taken place go beyond what has been said. I think it's clear, when, when, when this contract, irregards how wide a scope it is or not, when, when we all were not informed and brought up to speed and all thumbs up, let's go ahead and do this, that's the problem. Because it's not just a problem for this, it's a problem that looms ahead for future decisions that we're, we're gonna be faced with, and
We all agreed to the training, and we even discussed it at the board retreat.
I'm not talking about training, I'm talking about decisions, this, the, the training we were, we're fine with. It's, it's what has happened before and after that, that, well, we wanna do this because